The sixteenth day of the fifth regular session of the twentieth Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Aritas. Senator Figuerre. Senator Coeland. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Panwello.
Aye by.
Senator Perman. Senator Welly. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members are present.
We have quorum, the transact business this morning. Reading of the journal for Leader Harper.
Thank you, Speaker. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried when a dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, item five, presidential communications, there are none.
Continue.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none. Item seven, member communications, also none. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker. Item ten, state communications, we have one and it's number twenty dash twenty-seven.
Okay, signed that, Chief Clerk. Next.
Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, also none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, order of the day. Item fourteen, standing committee reports.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, for item fourteen, standing committee reports, we do not have any report this morning.
Next item.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, none, Mrs.
Next item.
Item sixteen, assignment measures and communications, we have a referral sheet, number twenty dash eighty-nine.
Okay, German members, take note of that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item eighteen, bill calendar.
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on the bill calendar. Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that we reconsider our action on the bill two twenty dash two fifty, CD one.
Any second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that Congress reconsider its action on second and final reading on CB twenty dash two fifty, CD one. That's, that's not subject to debate, but will require at least three votes of the delegations in order for us to reconsider. So, Chief Clerk, call the roll of delegations.
For reconsideration, State Department Chairman Aritas. State Department Chairman Panwello.
Yeah, Speaker, I have been in the mood of differing to our members of delegation. So today's chairman, Vice Chairman Ned's turn to cast our good vote here. Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Ned, please to cast our delegation vote.
Vice Chairman Ned.
Thank you, Chairman Panwello. Should I defer to Vice Speaker? I vote yes.
Hello, Anna.
State Department Chairman Wally. State Department Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted for reconsideration of CB twenty dash two hundred fifty, CD one.
For that reason, our reconsideration motion is adopted by Congress. The bill is now being reconsidered. So we have CB twenty dash two fifty, CD one, on the bill calendar for action. Okay, Floor Leader Harper.
Speaker, I move for passage of this bill on second and final reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that CB number twenty dash two fifty, CD one, be passed by Congress on second and final reading. Discussion. Chairman Romelow. You have anything you want to state on the record?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Again, I don't have a problem with giving it to the people for calling for a constitutional convention. I fully support it. But my concern now is that we have acted upon this bill with that understanding and agreed that we will take it up to the people in 2021. And with the information that we get, which also think factor into what action is now taking that we will put on the upcoming general election, doesn't land it right in my mind that I want, the information that we get is coming from the Chuk leadership, Chuk state leadership, namely the legislative, informing us that they would, if this constitutional convention is put to the people this upcoming election, then the website on the Chuk movement to secede would be postponed. And I hope they stick with their word, not to use this bill as their way out from this movement that they've been aggressively, from years to years, in acting the move on the cessation movement. So I would, I would support, but would also put the task with us, the members of your delegation from Chuk, to work closely with the leadership, that what we have agreed, they have informed us, would carry on, would not, I'm just hoping that they come forward with and stick with what they tell us now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Romelow. Well said and well put. And of course, all we can tell them is that this is our responsibility. We have to put this question to the people after ten years, but whether they use that for whatever reason, that's up to them. But for us, this is our responsibility under the FSM Constitution. But I understand we need to talk to them if that's about their commitment to what they, they've been telling, telling us right now, okay?
Speaker. John Perman.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you, vice members and all that are observing our session this morning. Speaker, my, and I hope the committee of the JCRP is listening live because they're not here in the gallery, hoping that if we're going to put into vote as soon as possible, whatever recommendations coming from them, and that's the reason why I'm supporting earlier. So again, to speed up the process or the work of JCRP, trying to put something together. If the people voted yes, their recommendation will be needed. Whatever information or recommendation coming from that committee should be here already if that's the case, if there's going to be another convention. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. I will allow Chairman Panwello to represent us when it comes to JCRP matters, but Chairman Panwello, you have the floor.
Yeah, Speaker, thank you. Good morning to you and all members this morning and those who are observing our session. Speaker, you know, I was thinking earlier that it is a good practice if our lawmaking body can allow what we speak during recess, what we discuss, sometimes on these important issues to be recorded because then our very public that we are representing can understand the extent to which our intentions are on the very prominent issues that are facing our nation. So on this particular topic, I will speak of how I feel about it as a member of Congress. I support the amendment that you have put on the bill to call for a constitutional convention. Number one, because I think as a lawmaking body, we hold to our citizens to have another constitutional convention and have them decide on it before it comes back to Congress. Sometime back, I believe, when I was Chairman of CHINGO, we did try to have a congressional hack to call for another question to go to the people to ask about holding a constitutional convention. And I think at the time, some of us members thought we did not enough, have enough money in the budget, so that was deferred again. So the amendment to bring it back from March 2021 to 2019, I think is a good one because it should not be based on convenience of members, but that we uphold the Constitution and what the Constitution says, we must go forward with it. And on the question of JCRB, I believe the committee have been preparing just for the information of good Chairman of Health and Social Affairs. Almost every session that Congress holds, the JCRB meeting, have been holding parallel meetings. And in the earlier meetings, Chairman Perman, organization of the JCRB, as you are well aware, has been happening. I think the latest one that was held during this session, there are more substantive issues that were brought up by our JCRB, including, of course, preparing the budget, the pillars that have been brought forward by the economists in dissecting it and meeting with the communities around FSM. I think pillar one is almost completed with very thorough recommendations to the nation. And in the budget, we also prepare for the eventual holding of actual negotiations with the US. So that's probably going to happen in FY19. So I think it's also the intention of the group to bring an amendment, propose amendment to this body. So we look forward to reviewing those after we will have consulted with the President in due time. But Speaker, to come back to each issue of Chuk cessation, I have been, maybe not as focal, but I have expressed my views in the past about this. As the person working with our Department of Foreign Affairs earlier and then a member of Congress today, I really do support the cohesiveness of our nation, to see that all four states can carry forward and if we have issues of, political issues of difference and advocating that one state secede from our nation. Of course, this is a democratic process and if it has to happen, it must happen. My view on, on the Chuk cessation is that I do believe that if the cessation were to go forward, it is my sense that it will be defeated because I think a lot of our citizens and mainly Chuk citizens are aware of the issues of our comeback to free association, how we are with the United States and any other action that would probably be trying to divide our states or have one leave the nation would be, in my view, would be not so wise an action. So my view is that Chuk citizens would defeat that one. And that's, of course, I will say, what do I know? But that's my sense, Speaker. So if we bring back the issue of calling for another Khan Khan in the next general election, the closest, that's a good one by our lawmaking body. And if Chuk were to decide to postpone, I think it will give the population more time to digest the issue, more time to meet the citizens and work out whatever the differences are there. So that's my view on it, Speaker, and I support the amendment and the passage of the bill that we just passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Panwello, for enlightening discussion. Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members and those who are observing. I believe it's in the Constitution that the question will be presented to the general population if they want a constitutional convention. And the question is supposed to be sent to the public every ten years. And the first one was since 1979, the first one was in 1990, the second one was in 2001. Since 2001, we haven't had another question out to the people. And I believe it's eighteen, nineteen, going on twenty years now since the question, I guess, was put out several years back, but was never acted upon in Congress. So we're putting it out again. With regards to the Chuk movement, there are serious concerns that have caused the movement to gain some momentum. And so I don't believe that we should pass this amendment to the bill just to defer their actions in Chuk. But what we should do is provide another opportunity or another avenue in which, through a constitutional convention, in which the representatives from Chuk can state their case. And if there need be amendments to the FSM Constitution, that would help their concerns. I believe we should put it out as soon as possible. So I am in agreement with the amendment. So thank you, Mr. Speaker. Therefore, I move for the previous question.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Floor Leader Harper.
Speaker.
Yes.
I withdraw that motion I made earlier.
Yes, I was hoping for it. Thank you. If there is an objection, the motion for previous question by Vice Speaker Moses has been withdrawn by himself. So we're still on discussion of the bill. Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I offer the amendment to the bill, I just want to take this opportunity to say my gratefulness to my brother here for all the words of wisdom that he has shared with us during the recess. I believe they're very convincing to the Department and even Chuk itself. So I believe we will have three votes on this. And if I may be correct, Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to offer an amendment. Wherever in the bill it says March 5, 2021, it should be inserted in place of March 5, 2019. I saw move, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess, Mrs. Speaker. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Floor Leader is still have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I'd like to restate my motion for the amendment. On the second line to the last in the title, originally, there was no fifth in the date of the election. So what we do is just simply put in fifth and delete 2021 to, in place of, put in 2019. And the whole phrase there where it says, as was submitted in 2021.
2001.
Oh, 2001, should all be deleted. And down to the body of the bill, line seven, the date 2021 should also be replaced by And that number five should be remained there, even it was originally deleted. I saw move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments to CB twenty dash two fifty, CD one, by Floor Leader, be adopted. The relevant rules, specifically the one prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading, are suspended to this point. There's no objection to that. So discussion on the offered oral amendments. If none, there's no objection, let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered oral amendments by Floor Leader Harper to CD one, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried, so CD one is now CD two. Any further discussion on CD two? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So the vote will be by, protocol of delegations, this second and final reading. Chief Clerk.
State Department Chairman Aritas. Chairman Aritas. State Department Chairman Panwello.
Aye by.
State Department Chairman Wally. State Department Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted for, Chuk absent.
CB number twenty dash two fifty, CD two, has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
None, Mrs. Speaker.
Resolution calendar.
Speaker.
There are none.
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Romelow.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I wish to withdraw resolution number twenty dash one one nine and put on today's agenda.
It's moved and seconded that resolution number twenty dash one one nine be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Romelow, you have the floor. Restate your motion. I think we have your resolution before us now.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Motion to pass CR number twenty dash one one nine. Thank you.
You have to withdraw and place first. Make a motion to withdraw and place. Because we didn't do it correctly. We want the number before the resolution. So just restate the motion. Do we try and place?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Withdraw CR number twenty dash one nine nineteen on today's resolution. Agenda. Thank you.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that resolution number twenty dash one nineteen, one one nine, be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty dash one one nine is now placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. The resolution is placed. Chairman Romelow, make your motion.
Motion to pass CR number twenty dash nineteen.
Any second? It's moved and seconded that resolution number twenty dash one one nine be adopted by Congress. Discussion.
Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. If I may not offend my colleague, honorable Romelow, I would like to make a motion to defer this resolution to, resolution calendar for tomorrow, so that our delegation can meet and try to resolve our own problem. Thank you.
Any second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that our resolution number twenty dash one one nine be deferred to the, our tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty dash one one nine is deferred to tomorrow's session. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Point of information.
Congress is back in session. We're still on the resolution calendar. Chairman Romelow.
Motion to withdraw.
To reconsider.
To reconsider action on the, motion to reconsider the resolution.
Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded that we reconsider on action on the motion to defer to CR number twenty dash one one nine. Those in favor of the motion to reconsider, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. That motion to defer is reconsidered. Restate the motion. Chairman Romelow.
Motion to table CR number twenty dash one one nine.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that CR number twenty dash one one nine be tabled. Those in favor of that motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Said resolution is now tabled. Okay? Next resolution.
None, Mrs. Speaker.
If none, there's no objection, we go down to our next item.
Item twenty, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measure to introduce, pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-one, miscellaneous communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, next item is miscellaneous business. Before we do that, short recess, subject to call of the chair. We're back in session. Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Before I make any motion for a term and sign a tie, I wish to take this opportunity to express on behalf of all of us, the members, our sincere thanks and gratitude to all our staff for all the good and hard work they have put in into our regular session, which has made it very successful. And also on behalf of three of us, the officers or presiders, I'd like to also extend the same to all honorable members for also their hard work and their diligent work every day to make sure that things are done as we want, or especially you, Speaker, as you request or want us to do. So for that, I thanks everybody who has taken the time and interest and hard work to put in everything to make this session a successful one. And so, Mrs. Speaker, if I may not be out of order. Yeah. The one.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Nation, Floor Leader, continue.
Thank you, Speaker. Before I make the appropriate motions, I was forced by my brother here to continue my words of appreciation, especially to our living attorney, Allison. So I wish to take this opportunity to thank you, Allison, for all the good work that you have done with Congress. We hope that in the future, you will be interested to come back and assist us as you have been doing these days. Mrs. Speaker, I move that all the journals from day one to today will be encroached by our appropriate staff and be reviewed and approved by the presiders. I saw move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that all of our records, specifically the journals, while we're not in session, shall be approved, reviewed and approved by the presiding officers. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried, so be it. So. Floor Leader, continue.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Without any objection, I move that this Congress or this regular session adjourned sign a tie.
It's moved and seconded that the fifth regular session of the twentieth Congress be adjourned, sign a tie. Those in favor- Those in favor of that motion, say yes, opposed nay. Let's all rise. Pursuant to the vote of Congress, I hereby declare the fifth regular session of the twentieth Congress adjourned, sign of time.